Hey Darren, can I get an audio check?
Yeah. There actually audio test.
Thank you. Can you hear me fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forty. The inside of the start. Sure does. What if you do it? Right about two. Well, the half. The baby went from up here? To down.
It's me.
That's. Oh, I mean, probably with that. On your share. And even. Sweet. At seven o'clock, I'd like to call up and order the regular scheduled council meeting Tuesday, July eight, two thousand twenty-three. If you with it. On day meeting and the plus of leaving. I want to.
I think it's. And the people always. Professors. Information. The soul with liberty and.
Moving on, better number three zoom instruction. Good evening, everyone. Just like the reminder, make sure we speak in the next conference room. So her sending so many here clearly in for your purposes. And I know we had a video chat, but keep the conversation close. It has an interesting. Set same instructions. So I let that. Thanks, Robert. Moving on, introduction. Guy. Guy around your street will be superintendent. Is it striker for Courageous Sunday Three South to Woodrow?
Molly Weber, member at large, age twenty-two, South Clear Lake Drive.
Prince Luster, member at large, ninety-five Penner Drive. Aaron Turp, twelve thirty-six White Harbor Drive District. George Schankel, Ward one, one forty-four West Fair Lake. For summer. But like. Robert calling. Administrator. Then let's not forget Dana.
Yeah, good evening. Dan Rippey, Ward two, one twenty-six Lakeside Court.
Thanks, Dan. Moving on to item number five, move all the monthly agenda. You all see the monthly agenda. Changes. I've been entertaining motion to. This is George, did I move that we approved July eighth, town council meeting minutes?
It's Molly, I'll second that.
This was just for the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. After everybody. You'd like to change it to the agenda. I'd like to do that.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion there is. All right, now, item number six, that is from the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, you all received corrupt. A burning addition. Not, I mean, I try this again. This is George, I'd like to move that we approve July eighteen, twenty twenty-three town council meeting minutes. About the June twentieth. July. It says July eighteen. July ingredients. No, no. The month. Oh. I'm not right, this is June. For the June meeting minutes. Okay. When they correct it of the date. Yeah. Got it.
It's Molly, I'll second. Motion with corrections.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. All right, item six B, June voucher register and warrants.
Good evening, everybody. For the month, this bounty runs from June twenty-third through July seventeen, which is yesterday. On the general side, there's fifty-three voucher or fifty-three warrants for total sixty-eight thousand two thirty-five point three cents. On the sewer side, it was a little light this month, really had twenty-one. Things were total twelve thousand eight ninety-eight seventy-two. The big things that came through this month were, we had an eighteen thousand dollar payment for fire protection for the town three months. That was. Done this month, this second payment is due at the end of the year on December thirty-first. Will be done then. We also have the correct bikes and the equipment that the officers ordered, so that's on this voucher as well, or this on this voucher as well. If you don't have any questions, these totals got their done at for approval for is for ninety-seven thousand two nineteen and ninety-five cents.
I have a couple of questions. Sure. The first one is, on June twenty-first, we had an eight hundred and thirty dollar invoice of M and C for catch basin to clean out. Where were the catch basins? Were they town or private?
The swamp there on South Clear Lake Drive.
Eight thirty or something.
Something like that.
Okay.
The beavers had packed it clear full and the water was getting close to the road again.
Was this the catch basin guy or did you have to complete like, is all we had to do was clean the catch basin and date everything around it? It's about an annual event for us, so we're going to check. And we've since removed the nuisance problem again. Okay, until they come back.
The seven forty-ish.
Yeah, seven forty, okay, I think they, okay, yes. Okay, yeah, the other question I have, there were six invoices from parish. Were those six? Brinders replacement? Okay, I suspected that, I just wanted to double check. And, oh, there is one more here. In July, July third, Nippon, a lift station, I don't know what that means, what's? Are we ever trying to figure that out? You know, me and Guy were having a discussion about that one this afternoon, because I got the bill, I pulled it up, and we looked at it, and it is what it is, so. Sensual station. It says lift station, but it doesn't give us any direction to figure out what it actually is. Okay, on the bill, on the direct list, this lift station, so I might give them.
You guys are following up on it?
Yeah, I might give them a call. Those are the only questions I have, thank you.
Any other questions, Renee?
No. I appreciate how the parish is captured, so we can keep track of that, and we all have talked about it, so thank you both.
It's an expensive fix to a more serious problem of like, oh, so. Much as we don't like that, I think it's a necessary evil right now.
Dan, any questions?
No questions, thanks Darren.
All right. Now, I entertain a motion to approve. This is Brent. Motion to approve voucher as presented. This is George, and I'll second. All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries. All right, moving on to unfinished business, item seven. A golf cart update.
Okay, so as we touched on last time, we're much further ahead on the golf cart than we were on the parking. We've got a sample draft of the golf cart ordinance that you'll see with the changes that we all came to a consensus on, and we'd like to see in there. One update on this is because of the fees that are associated to it. And it's adjusting an original ordinance that we need to declare an emergency situation for the golf carts. And that is written into it. Because of the emergency situation. The ordinance prescribing a penalty for a forfeiture or a violation must be before it takes effect, be published in the manner prescribed. And it declares an emergency requiring immediate effectiveness. Also, because this has fees associated to it. There's some slightly different rules, we need to advertise it ten days prior to the meeting before we vote on it, and the Hawks provided this information to Nate and I, so we add it. Since this is one of the first ones with the fees that Nate's been associated with, Mike also provided the documentation on that. And because it has a fee associated to it, should it pass, we also need to publish that we passed the ordinance. Now, one thing in addition is we need to post the new ordinance in each one of the wards. So talk with Guy, we've got speed signs throughout our community, and we can post one of the ordinances on each one of those speed signs to fulfill that requirement. And then have another copy posted on the front. So, like I said, the golf cart is further ahead, it has the language in it for the emergency now. The parking ordinance, I'd also like to discuss as well. The concern that council provided to us was, we've got within one section of the ordinance, two different time variations. One being four hours and one being one hour. So it needs to be adjusted to have three total sections instead of two sections. Right now, we've got basically the outline of the ordinance in section one, it's referencing those hours that certain things can be parked. The four hour is for construction or utility work. The one hour timeframe is for residential services. They don't see an issue with us calling out those two different things, but feel that it needs to be in two different sections within the ordinance. So I didn't have a chance to meet with Dave prior to this meeting. But I'm going to arrange a meeting for him. We'll get a draft to all of council prior to next meeting, so you guys can look at it. As a group, want to open it up for discussion when it comes to the emergency side of things and to the golf cart, because this one, Nate can publish prior to the August meeting, and we can vote and move forward on it. And if everybody's in agreement, when we send out the draft after the language is adjusted for the parking, that could also be an action item on the August meeting as well. So with that, Darren, I'd like to open that conversation for council.
It's Molly, I do, and it's in line appearing first at the Clear Lake Association meeting on Saturday, there was some discussion about not being on the backseat of a golf cart. Unless you're, if you're under ten years old, but now that golf carts have seat belts and they're, you know. Does that, is that something we should entertain changing that it's fine if you're on the back, if you're with an adult and you're in a seatbelt, if you're between the age of the five and ten? I'm throwing that out, it was just, it came up, and Chris had talked about how some of the. Promises had changed, and so I don't know if, if we should consider it, now is the time, since we're looking at it for.
So number thirteen. Well, number thirteen as well, I'll talk about that. So it talks about the number of occupants on a, for a golf cart, and this is the lesser number of persons from factory seating that's installed on the golf cart, or six. There are some golf carts out there that would be manufactured that can hold more than six people now. So by that, by the, this ordinance here on thirteen, the most that could be on a golf cart would be six people. However, there are golf carts out here, or only like that, hold up in six people from the factory. And how it's manufactured, so I think it's something we need to look at. Instead of maybe having the six in there, just maybe put it in there that number of occupants for the golf cart would be, however it's fact, manufactured by the. How many, if it's made to set six people, if it's made in factories to eight people, whatever it is, we can go by that.
Is that listed like on a jet scan on a boat, is that on the golf cart?
So, yeah. Some of them are, some of them are not. It just depends on the golf cart manufacturer. Basically, we'd kind of have to look at the software, how many seats it have, and whether or not it's designed for two people or three people per bench seat, and then how many seats there are. So that I think we need to look at, and then also number fourteen, like Molly was talking about, the ten years of age. So by that, it says that anybody entered the ten year base, I went in the front seat. Well, when this was written originally, pretty much only had maybe a front seat and a back seat, now you know, they got a lot more seats. So by this, the ten or under would have to sit in the very front seat, but some of these golf carts now have second, third, and fourth row seating. So they could be able to sit anywhere in there, if they're on the back, all these golf carts now have seatbelts in them as well, whereas before they did not. So something maybe to look at is if on the very back of the golf cart or on the second or third row. Are they, is an adult with them, are they in a seatbelt, things of that nature to look at. There's quite a few of them who were, who seen that adults on the very back with like a smaller child, small child wearing a seatbelt, and then there's other children up front with the driver. So that may be something.
Is that something you could pursue and check into? I mean, I, safety wise, I don't think on the backseat with an adult, I mean, I think we've all seen like the adults holding like a baby on the back, that I don't. But then that baby wouldn't be in the seatbelt either, so that would, is that something you?
The baby is being in the first or second.
Right.
On somebody else's.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, and so that's where do we need to consider that changing that instead of saying, just maybe say, instead of in the front seat, say, not on the backseat. Unless.
Right.
Between the age of.
What about all persons, sorry. All persons of the age ten years or less ride in the front seat of a golf cart or say, this car with a seatbelt, or something along. Do you some of all of the lines?
But you wouldn't want a two-year-old on the backseat on the back.
I guess my question is, number one, we're not the only.
And we check.
Soon be. The. Golf cart probably puts out some type of. Safety manual or this thing. I don't know if we want to dictate that stuff, I think we'll go back to manufacturer and see how they order, were worried on the base, I think.
Yeah, but we just need to adjust that though, because we are dictating this.
And I'm not sure that we want to pick that.
So maybe we start that.
Because they, yeah. Thirteen and down.
Yeah, fourteen.
Or fourteen. Would it be?
Chris could change that.
I can see, I can see. Simply, you know, they. There's, I don't. Three major manufacturers, there Yamaha, you'd go, what are, but then you've got some of the hybrids that I'm just sure wants to provide bubbles, things like that. I think probably their safety, but not. I mean, because we could be dictating something that they don't want to add, and that I do. It's something that's.
Yeah, but we have to manage that, because what we have there is not.
Right. So we know what we need to change. All right.
You got a question, would it be prudent also to include the drivers unencumbered? Chris, I don't know how it is in driving a vehicle as a police officer, to keep somebody driving the car with a baby embraced as they're driving, is that a violation?
That would be a lot, yeah, that would be.
I want to incorporate that, because I have seen that here, and the same thing with dogs.
So having a baby violates their property rights, yeah, hopefully also, so, it's not against the law to drive the dog in your lap, or not against the law riding, or by the operating motorcycle, or say moped. With items sitting on your lap as you're operating. So that it's not a law against law to do that in the car or the vehicle, so.
Does this ordinance governs what you can and can't do as far as enforcement, or do the rules of the road also prevail with the golf cart? Went around the place, so the ordinance covers that on number. They all rules of the road. Number ten, not ten, okay, so yeah, you're, that's where.
Oh, the guy, and that would.
Yes.
Be caught under number ten, along with carrying a baby. No, because some golf carts have seatbelts, some golf carts don't have seatbelts, and there's no laws as you have to, at a square seatbelt in a golf cart. It's not, because it's not considered a motive. So is that what I guess, to the decision, the council, that wants to be included there now? Dan. Dan?
Yeah, thanks. So I would be in favor of deleting number fourteen altogether, and I think that we have to be sensitive that. I will never legislate completely the safety of our residents' children's, I think that at some point. That this crosses a line whereby we need to rely on the parents to take care of their, the children. And the person that's responsible is the person driving, much like a car, that's, that's my view on the matter. Ultimately, I would, I would be in favor of just deleting fourteen, I think everything else that Brent and, and folks have worked on here are reasonable. And, and it's a job well done, but I think fourteen may be crossing that line for me.
All right, thanks, Dan. Also on the governor. Yeah, so your plan is then to. Order. For all this making.
Correct. Correct.
Now, onto the parking ordinance, if you guys feel comfortable after the draft is changed, we're not changing any of, we're not making any changes to it other than what kind of the consensus was, it's more of a formatting change. So that can be sent out to the group, like I said, after I meet with Dave, and we can get that out, and it can be an action item. We just need to decide as a group before ten days, so Nate has enough time to do the, do his things.
I recommend that on days, we just.
It's good thing, just to be safe.
Yeah, that's what I do, when they have.
Good suggestion.
So our meeting is the fifteenth, you're talking by the first.
Yeah, by the first, though. I'll get with Dave and get that out, and we can make a call, if we want that as an action item, or if we need to discuss it further and have it on the E S company.
And more questions? All right.
Moving on, seven, the road committee update, Dan, you have the four.
Alright, thank you, everyone, and my apologies for not being physically present tonight, traveling for some work commitments this evening, but. Uh, hopefully, uh, um, you can hear me okay, and we've got some really informative information I'd like to cover. Um, on the, uh, town of Clear Lake Road Committee activities, next slide, please. So I just wanted to kind of open up, because we haven't had any substantive conversations since we, uh, we as a town council. Uh, established the, uh, the road committee back in February, um, just as a reminder. Um, the, uh, the folks, uh, that comprise the road committee are Jim Bushy, Bob Hill. Tim Reese, Larry Dean, uh, Todd Thurber from DLZ and myself. And I, uh, was, uh, established as chair for this road committee. Hmm. Um, the road committee adopted as its first order of business, the rules of procedure on March sixteenth to govern its proceedings, and we've been. Compliant to those rules, uh, in all of our meetings. Uh, to date, we've held nine, two plus hour meetings. And have conducted, uh, you know, uh, to date, uh, in addition to those, uh, meetings, I would say that we've spent. Uh, quite a number of extra, extra hours just in, um, the, uh. Uh, preparation of materials for those meetings and, um, uh, um, just a dialogue with the community. Uh, the meeting minutes for all of our meetings have been posted, uh, timely to the town of Clear Lake webpage. Uh, those are being located under the, uh, spot of, uh, under departments, street and sewer, road committee materials. And just as a reminder, the overall purpose that, uh, that we as, we established for the committee is, is to really. Look at, um, improving the consistency of decisions through the establishment of process. Um, relative to how we come about, uh, deciding which road projects we want to pursue. Um, address directly the weaknesses of the current road project process, which we defined as it, uh, a process that's really not. Uh, documented, it it comes at easy influence from outside. Uh, perspectives and agendas and not well understood or communicated, uh, to residents. And then lastly, develop for use by town elected officials and staff. A road policy and the supporting materials which regulates how our roads are to be maintained. And then as a self-imposed goal, um, as we, as a committee have worked through. Uh, what we've been able to achieve, we believe that there's likely, uh, recommendation that we need to make to council. To, uh, continue, uh, the road committee, uh, with an expanded purpose. Next slide. So how did we, uh, how did we go about, uh, uh, doing our business and, and so the development approach that we looked at is. Uh, there's a, a number of pieces that we felt were important, uh, that would lead to. The development of the town of Clear Lake Road Policy or a recommendation thereof. Um, I've colored in green those elements or pieces that have been completed and released and are are all present. On the town of Clear Lake webpage for, uh, your and and the residents viewing. But just a brief description of each piece is the road vision statement, starting at twelve o'clock. Really provides the overarching objectives, uh, for our roads. Um, then we follow that up with a mission statement, which is a roadmap, uh, to achieve the vision's objectives. Followed by a set of governing requirements, which is a collection of features, uh, specifications and constraints that we would give. To our road engineer like DLZ to, uh, uh, essentially fence the, uh. And and show compliance to when creating a design on a particular road segment project. Then we have a set of, uh, road design standards, which is, which is in draft form, not yet complete. Which addresses the, the concern that came out of, uh, public discussion about, hey, as we've got roads, is there anything reusable to meet? You know, the governing requirements, so this document is a set of specifications that we can employ. Uh, to understand whether we have any reuse of existing road components. Um, we then go into the prioritization, uh, annual process. Uh, this particular document, uh, is a series of actions taken annually to achieve the road project or the road objectives. So it's a recurring twelve, you know, set of actions that that are ti- on a timeline by month of the year. And then we have, uh, the road prioritization tool, which is an analytic model. Which is used to determine the order of road projects based on a common set of criteria, so every road segment is graded. Um, and stand, stands alone with, with the other segments as part of this, uh, these results. All of those pieces then will, will flow into the road policy. Which is essentially a framework of guidelines used to achieve the, the objectives outlined in the, in the road vision and mission statements. And as I said, that, uh, all the items colored in green, um, are, uh, available of. Uh, released and available and and ready for use, next slide, please. So what I'd like to, to dive into with the, just a little bit of detail, because I know, um, I don't have time tonight to go into all of it. But I wanted to give a summary on two pieces that are relevant, uh, for tonight. And, uh, the first is the annual process, so this is a summary of, uh, the twelve months as I described on the previous slide, January through December. Um, we broke up the, the process of essentially. Um. Getting to a decision of which projects, uh, we would recommend for the next year. Uh, going through the development of the designs and then ultimately the construction. And finally, uh, with item twelve, a post-construction lessons learned meeting. So that we have the ability to, to apply continuous lesson learns year over year. And so those are, those are distributed across the months above. Unfortunately, um, what we're dealt with, uh, this year is, and I've indicated by the red stars. Um, we're essentially in July, and you can see the number of things that in a, had we launched this process in Ja- in January. You know, we would have been, uh, uh, co- you know, sequentially moving through one through twelve. But unfortunately, um, you know, we've got a process now, we want to start using it, uh, we're gonna have to, to. Uh, do a little flexibility this year before we get into the cadence year over year. So I've highlighted in, uh, with red stars, you know, what we're gonna talk about tonight. Essentially, uh, I'm gonna, uh, present the, uh, results of our prioritized road projects. Um, where we've got a recommendation of which ones we, uh, we believe we need to pursue next year. And then at the end of the, end of the meeting, when all answers, questions are answered. Um, I need to bump us to seven point three, which is, I'm gonna ask, uh, council for approval to proceed. Forward with a CCMG application. And, uh, you know, the specifics, uh, behind where we're at this year is, uh, for twenty twenty-three, the, uh. The road project, the call for road projects ends July twenty-eighth with, uh, in dot. Um, just as a reminder, uh, there are two calls for projects, one's in January, one's in July, so. I just wanted to be upfront that, uh, um, DLZ, uh, if, if we want to pursue a road project in twenty twenty-four. DLZ is prepared to move us through steps, uh, uh, in between there, namely four, five, six, and seven, and get us there by, by next week. But, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that, uh. The other thing, uh, that I wanted to point out that's contained, uh, within the process, annual process document is. Um, what's called a RAC diagram, effectively, that's in the lower half of this slide. Along the left most column is the same steps, one through twelve. And what this really indicates and, and the work that this committee has done has really brought forward. How, um, how many stakeholders, uh, really are involved in deciding. Uh, which projects to, to move forward with. Um, and prior, and their prioritization, so you'll see under the stakeholder names. All of the people that, uh, the road committee believes are active participants. Ranging from, uh, receiving information, uh, to being, uh, the person responsible for the activity. And those are designated by, um, the R, A, C, and I, uh, in each of those respective cells. The other thing that, uh, this really communicates is, uh, coming out of our. Uh, community discussions last year, you know, we heard, uh, pretty consistently that, that. We weren't sharing information in a timely manner, and so if, if I would bring your attention to one column. Under the stakeholders, it would be the community column, it's about centrally located in that matrix. And you can see that not only is the community informed, literally in every step, needs to be, uh, informed in every step. Um, except for item, uh, step two and step five. Um, they're also, uh, held, um, in a consultant role in, uh. Two steps, namely, uh, six and twelve. And then they're also, they have a responsibility in the, in step one, which is, is part of the prioritization tool updates, which we'll talk more about. So, uh, the takeaway here is we are now, uh, fully, uh, integrated in all of the town functions. In determining, um, our road projects year over year. And, uh, with a, with a comprehensive set of knowledge to do so, any questions before I move on?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, I said, none, none here, go ahead.
Okay, so let me get into the prioritization tool and our, eventually our recommendations. Next. Okay, so, um, this is the analytical model, it uses Excel to do its, its work. And, uh, just so folks know, there are forty-seven road segments, um, that we're evaluating with a common set of criteria and rating scale. Uh, the committee took the time to actually plot where each of those road segments are around the lake. Uh, they aren't, uh, they, very few of them share length and, and, uh, you know, constraints, uh, they all come with. Kind of a unique set of stuff. So, uh, visualizing this is, we found to be very helpful, so we, we put this right in the tool. Um, once we had a model that was producing results, uh, we verified, we went around and verified. Uh, the results were making sense by using two, uh, visual observation opportunities. The first was, we had a relatively large rain event on May seventh. Um, the committee members went around the lake, we took pictures of, uh, any and all. Uh, visible drainage, uh, related, um, concerns. And we came back to the tool and made sure that the, uh, the tool was accurately, uh, addressing. Um, any of the severe, more severe areas. The second thing that we did, um, is we gave Todd, uh, Thurber the results of the model. And we asked, asked him to go and, uh, and tour the lake. He, uh, completed that tour on six one, and what we asked for is based on, uh, the priorities of the model is. Is, uh, is producing, are there any disconnects, you know, in his visual observations, um, that, uh. He would, uh, take pause, uh, with, and, uh, it turned out that the results were no, it actually correlated quite well. So based on that, uh, the maturing, the maturity and the check of the model, we did an initial release on, uh, just recently on July thirteenth. And, uh, it is from that initial released, uh, model that, uh, we're gonna discuss its recommendations here in another slide or so. Um, there were just two other notes that, uh, we felt important to, uh, communicate is that, uh. We, we have a number of really short length segments around the lake, uh, that, uh, within that forty-seven. And so for construction efficiency, uh, reasons, we did combine, um, probably a, uh, six or eight segments. Uh, with their adjacent longer segments, so that, uh, they would be done at the same time. Uh, the other thing that, uh, that this model is limited to. It is that it will not, um, produce a recommendation. That, uh, far exceeds the, the, uh, uh, the length that's affordable within the current tax levies. Um, that are imposed on our residents, uh, as of, uh, twenty twenty-three. So that's important, uh, from an affordability perspective. Any questions? Okay, next slide.
Dan, it's Molly, I do have one question. So you're basing it on the same amount of monies that we currently receive, or maybe Todd can.
Yes, our tax levies bring in a, uh, a revenue, a certain amount of revenue. Uh, into each fund within the, within the town budget. And we constrained the recommendation to be, uh, not exceed those budgets.
Thank you.
Annually. Okay, um, from a criteria and rating scale perspective, uh, each segment, uh, has, uses three, uh, criteria in its prioritization scheme. Uh, the first is the current year Pazer rating, uh, the second is a five-year trended Pazer of the Pazer ratings. And then we have a unique considerations category, uh, which effectively allows the voice of re- of residents. Our superintendent, our marshal, uh, and others that, uh, you know, have, um. Uh, use of the roads that, uh, might run across a safety risk or a deficiency or an issue. And, uh, and they can, through their communication to the town, that's where their voice would be, uh, represented in this prioritization criteria. Uh, then we recognized that each of those three criteria do not carry the same level of importance, and so we assigned a weighting criteria. Uh, against those, and, uh. Uh, we recommended that the current year Pazer be the most heavily rated. It's a representation of the current state of the road. Um, followed by the unique consideration, which is either a developing risk or concern. Uh, or a existing, uh, deficiency or issue that may occur. May have occurred since we last did our Pazer. And then, uh, lastly was the five-year trend, which is really looking more at a forecast of when that particular segment might need attention. And so it's, uh, more into the, uh. And so it's more into the planning type consideration as opposed to action. Within each of the criteria, we use a one to five rating. What this rating scale does is establish a grade within each criteria. And I'll just run through to give you the feel for how that's working. The example I've provided below called Buck Point Drive. This segment, you'll see in the next column from the left, the prioritization just criteria described. And then if you look over to the right, you'll see the rating criteria, one through five. And then the numbers or the letters or descriptions in each of the cells below are the varying degrees within that particular criteria. So Pazer scores, we know, can range from roughly zero to 10. And so in this particular example, Buck Point Drive has a current Pazer rating of a seven. So highlighted in blue is the seven-six category, which gives it a numerical value of two. And then with the weighting factor times five, gives it a numerical subtotal of 10. And then we do the same thing for the five-year trend and the unique considerations. And in this case, there were no unique considerations, so it scored a low value of one. All of those subtotals are added up into a grand total score. In this case, it says 16. And those grand total scores are then racked and stacked for each segment to develop our prioritized list, the largest score being the highest priority. Now, when we got into the, looking at the results, we saw that some segments were tied with each other on grand totals. And so we chose to use the radar metrics coming off of our signs that we've invested in around the around the lake, which gives us a volume of traffic as one of the outputs. And we would prioritize segments that have higher traffic over those, maybe with the same score but lower volume of traffic. Any questions on how we the criteria and how we're using it to provide a a rack and stack prioritized list?
Brent, just a comment. Love Cross referencing the data and radar matrix.
Thank you, Brent. Yeah, it's fun to see all of this, these little individual elements that we're putting into place over the last several years, really starting to work together. So appreciate you noticing that.
And Dan, it's Molly. Unique considerations was determined based on what? I mean, I see here, you know, safety risk deficiency or issue. So if there's already been damage to vehicles because of the road?
Yes, so if we have Molly, a large pothole, it's causing flat tires or something, that would be, you know, either a moderate or severe deficiency and issue. It's existing and therefore it would get a higher number. If we see something that cosmetically is happening to the road or there's maybe a blind spot that has caused some near misses or something, this is where Marshall's kinds of inputs would come into play. Then we would decide whether that was a minor risk or a moderate risk to residents. And you can see the scoring that would be applied there.
Thank you. Guys, so if guys sees, sorry, Dan, Brent, if guys sees a defect on one of the road, the materials used to make the road starting to show like that would be a unique circumstance that the street utility team could bring to our attention.
That is correct, yes.
It's all yours, Dan. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm ready to move on to the next slide where we get into some of the results. So here is a list of all 47 segments. And they're listed from highest priority, which is the fourth column in, from the left, all the way down to the lowest priority. What I want to emphasize is that nobody should use this particular result to go home and say, okay, this is when my road is going to be done. Really, anything beyond five years is subject to change because of the way the criteria is set up and the process, which we didn't talk about in detail, describes how we are going to do a re-rack and stack every year because it's important to recognize that road conditions can change from over the winter time, which is very stressful on them. And so, but what we can do is, in particular, and what I'm showing on the next slide, is focus in on the five-year plan. I think it's perfectly reasonable and really necessary for the town to use the five-year prioritization. Let's go to the next slide, please. The five-year prioritized list, which was that orange shaded area as a plan, you know, for planning purposes. I mean, this forecast should not change substantially. It's typically the worst conditions, road conditions, and, you know, will need to be addressed. And so from a planning purpose, the five-year recommendations coming out of the model are perfectly viable to work with. We went ahead and colored our little roadmap by the segments that are being recommended out of the model for each of the years, 2023 through 2027. Of course, 2023, we're all very familiar with. That's the current set of CCMG projects that are planning to start here in roughly in September, the month of September. So of specific interest is looking forward, then we've got in 2024, we're going to talk a little bit more about this, but the Lakeview Drive segments are what's coming out of the model. And you can see on down the list for 2025, 2026, and 2027. So again, another nice visual result, you know, where you can see on the map the areas that the model is saying we need to be planning to address over the next five years. Any questions on that? Okay, let's get right down to the bottom line here for one year, our one-year recommendation. Next slide, please.
Dan, before you get into the one-year recommendation, can I ask on the current project?
Go ahead, Molly.
Yes, there's supposed to be a public meeting with API, our contractor that was, that won the bid. And it's supposed to be in July or that's when we anticipated that. When will that meeting be?
Let's see, Todd's, I see Todd is on the line. Okay, so that's a different Todd. But anyway, my answer would be generically what we're working to get the schedule finalized with API. Todd and I have reviewed a draft. We've provided some questions and comments back on that draft. I think it's, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but once we get that final, I think that's when we start communicating to the residents. But I'll let you take it from there.
Yes, we get that final draft from them that we can paint it out so we know.
But it would be a public meeting, correct? They'll be here 2% and respond? That's the intent of that meeting, correct, to inform the residents? And will we have, say, two weeks' notice that we can get that up on the website and do a reach alert to communicate that information?
That would be quite open, yes.
And I know the scope of the current project can't change, but has there been, there have been any methods or needs that have changed as we've moved forward from the road committee and from yourselves while you guys are on the road?
Yeah, what was, I'm sorry.
I'm just asking the questions now before you get into the ask for the next section. And so my question is on the current CCMG grant that we've been awarded. Has the road committee identified any other methods or means, you know, that need to be changed? I recognize we can't change the scope of the project, but is there anything so far that you have identified as, you know, a method or a need has changed through the process that you guys have taken on?
So the answer to that is maybe. And so let me describe why I said maybe. What we did as part of our work and what took us a little bit more time is we deep, we did some real deep diving into drainage, just the topic of drainage. And in that effort, we looked at eight of the most problematic locations around the lake to basically convince ourselves that the governing requirements that we want DLZ to hold themselves accountable to in developing a concept were complete and actually delivered a workable solution. Okay, so with that said, and having the confidence that yes, indeed, those requirements do deliver a solution in our most challenging areas. And I would couch that by saying might not be the best solution because a better solution might be arranged by partnering with a resident. But nonetheless, it was a solution. We can now, the road committee has asked for Todd to reevaluate the drainage approach at 22 West Clear Lake Drive. And not so much, I would say at this point, not so much that we think it's a problem, but does it, maybe it's an over design based on the governing requirements or there might be other alternatives that are worthy of discussion? So that's where we're at on that question, Molly.
That's great, and I'm fine with them. I was just curious as council, I mean, you know, so thank you. And thank you to everybody that sits on the road committee. So that's all I have for the current project. I'm fine if you want to move forward. Does anybody? Yep, it's all yours, Dan.
Yeah, and I would just circle back to your question to Todd about the, we call it a pre-construction meeting in the annual process document. It's section 11.2. And it's all documented in there. And what I would like to point out is that in 11, in the matrix, RACI matrix, it calls out an information exchange with the community. So I just wanted to kind of, I wanted to use your question as a way that that process, you know, can work, works.
Right. Yes, I was going off of what was posted on the website as far as the steps and the timing. And I know that was a tentative time. And since we are sitting here in the middle of July and our next meeting won't be till towards the end of August, I was like, okay, we should probably, if it's going on the books before the next council meeting, I think it would be great. And I just want to make sure that we do inform the community of when that meeting and give them enough advance notice that we can have engagement if so desired.
Yeah, I think both, I think both Todd and I, it's fair to say that we're, we would have expected an answer from API at this point in time. We don't have it, so we need to raise it up on urgency scale.
Thank you. No, I was just counting back. If we're starting in September, it should probably be in August. It's probably going to be before our next council meeting. So it was just an awareness perspective. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, that brings us to the last slide, which is the one-year recommendation. We've already touched on it, of course, and that is the the model is, and the road committee's recommendation to council is that next year, our CCMG project include like the three segments of Lakeview. It's currently listed as a, with a Pazer rating of three. And you can see it on the map, so it would be from beginning to end of Lakeview Drive within the town limits. And that's, that's the long and the short of it for 2024. So it's a very simple recommendation to move forward with. So I want to open it up to questions. Any final questions?
And when would the work, I know we would have to wait, so wait, could you do a quick on the timing again? This needs to be submitted, I recognize, by the end of the month.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So the, here's, is that Todd? Are you?
I can answer. Yeah. So they were back in the time frame of October to December. Last year was late, the word of summer. So it's somewhere in that timeframe.
Thank you.
And then
Yes.
Did, did same kind of time frame?
So here's the, here's the immediate steps forward should council approve our recommendation to move forward on Lakeview. Todd effectively will take that decision tonight. If it's a favorable decision, Todd is posed with the challenge of using the existing coring samples that we did last year. We have two on Lakeview Drive to establish the basis for any, the road, essentially the roadbed's usability. And so he'll use that as an input to his concept development as well as the right-of-way restrictions that go along that road. Because the other thing that you will see in the drainage governing requirements is to maximize the use of passit swales. And so we need right-of-way to do that as opposed to pipe. So he would use, he would start developing his concept to be compliant to those governing requirements. He would pull that together over the next week effectively. And along with estimates and other application documents, I have requested of him to plan on a special session with council for him to review those documents and receive a final approval to proceed with the application by the 27th, which is Thursday next week. So he's shouldering a lot of work, but that's just the situation we're in. Any questions on that?
You did say the core samples were from 22? Yeah, ones we did last year.
Yeah, we did two core samples last year on Lakeview Drive. Okay. Um, ready to proceed? Any other questions? All right. Okay, so, uh, given no additional questions, I motion, I make a motion, um, to accept the recommendation by the Town of Clear Lake Road Committee. To make the three segments of Lakeview Drive our CCMG, uh, project for 2024.
Motion, do I have a second?
It's Molly. I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor taking a bite by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? There is.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to make a, another motion. Uh, I motion. To authorize DLZ to proceed. With preparing all CCMG application documents associated with the recommended Lakeview Drive projects for review. And final approval. To submit it special, uh, for submission at special session prior to July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Motion, do I have a second?
The, this is Brent. I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries.
And then I would, uh, I would, my get-off-the-stage, uh, comment will be that, um. As part of the rollout, um, you know, we touched on just the surface of the work, as you could, you could tell, and there's a lot of detail and the, and the fact that, uh. Uh, the success of this, this process is really going to be driven by the ownership of the base various stakeholders. And so, uh, we will be developing a training, um, associated with the process. Uh, that, uh, we, we will help us, uh, roll this out and, uh, get each of the stakeholders, uh. You know, familiarized with their roles and responsibilities to make this thing. Never, uh, to be, make this thing successful and, and never, you know, go back to the, the questions. That we've had, uh, in past years. So predictable, reliable, and, uh, serving of the community. So. That's my get-off-the-stage comment.
Hey, Dan, this is George. I'm not going to let you leave quite so quick. Uh, first of all.
Ah, come on, George.
Complimentary. First of all, I'd like to, uh, just again, publicly, uh, uh, thank, uh, Jim Bushy, Bob Will, Tim Wright, Larry Dean, and yourself as citizens that participated. In this, along with, uh, Todd, they're, uh. The, uh, the time spent, the significant results are, uh, quite interesting, and you've given us a lot here to look at. Uh, the other thing, I'm just curious from a learning standpoint, uh, what was the most significant thing you learned from the road committee, uh, in this experience that you were involved in?
I think the, uh, I think just the, the challenge of our drainage related issues, some of it, uh. Um, you know, I don't, uh, a fair amount of it, you know, is just, um, tied back to the lack of planning. You know, having exposure now on the plan commission, on the infrastructure, you know, that, that. You know, the challenges that we have in our drainage around the lake, um. Are largely because of, of the lack of really long-term planning there. So, uh, that, that was the single biggest challenge that we took on as a road committee to get a comprehensive set of guidance. Uh, to DLZ and, uh, the engineers to, um, you know, deliver us. A reliable drainage, uh, as part of the, of the project. We also rolled into that, as, as you could tell, by prioritizing the passive swales. Our concern and really, uh, everybody's concern of what makes the lake so wonderful. Clear Lake is, is what we're about. And preservation and conservation of Clear Lake. Um, there's no reason the roads can't be supportive of that. And so that's where the passive swales. Uh, idea and maximizing their use came out of. And so. Um, that, the drainage, George, is, is the answer to that. And, uh, I believe we're delivering a really comprehensive. Result, uh, due to those efforts.
But I think that's, uh, absolutely driving in the right direction. Uh, on which it's kind of a drainage. Will there, uh, be a policy statement regarding how we address drainage going forward? So each time it's not a, uh, reinvent the wheel scenario?
Yes, there will be. And, uh, so that's, you, you haven't seen the, the, the policy. Recommendation yet because we're, we're still stitching it together with all of the finalized work. But, uh, yes, that will be, uh, part of it.
Great. If I look forward to it, thank you, Dan.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, Dan, I'm not going to let you.
All right.
So, so based on next year's project, we're just under one mile set. Proximally, where these are going to come in that big stop of current revenues.
Um, it's likely to be, um, just over, Darren, but, uh. We felt that, uh, there might be some efficiencies by stringing these three segments together. Uh, in the construction. So it was, it was at, uh, too, too low of fidelity for us to, to make. Um, a different recommendation at this time. So I, I, we just need to get into the design. Todd needs to understand what's reusable. Um, again, the, uh, the length of roads are being constrained by the complete, uh, reconstruction that we're doing on this year's. Projects and those associated costs, which we consider to be the most conservative. Of estimates. So we're close, we're slightly over. I think, uh, little over point seven miles. Is what the, uh, a full reconstruction equivalent length in, in, uh. Is, but, uh, again, uh, as a road committee, we believe that this, this strikes. Uh, the, we, we, we believe that this work can be done within our budget.
Oh, one last question, I guess, based off of what I just heard, or. Is the road committee looking at changing or giving the forty-seven segments down as something that's a little more. Reasonable, I guess. It seems like forty-seven segments. I, I know you can't combine some of the segments because the traffic flow doesn't. Orange, some of those, but, you know, like, like three segments. And what I.
The short answer is, is no, but, um, you will notice in our meeting minutes, we started to add what, what a section at the end called parking lot. Uh, these are topics that, uh, were outside our current scope. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, add that one, Darren, uh, in there and, uh. And we'll rack and stack and prioritize them as part of our recommendation to continue with this road committee.
I just noticed that on the spreadsheet, there were several, um. Close to one another. And close in ratings, uh, I see that. I don't like going around them, like, and seeing what looks to be patches here and there. Prefer longer runs, despite conservation.
Personally, I don't, I don't understand how those, you know, the, the, the genesis of why we ended up with forty-seven. Um, that would be an interesting, uh, research project, and maybe Todd already knows, but, uh. Uh, we didn't, uh, spend the time, uh, knowing that we were already a little bit behind the eight ball on, on the schedule of delivering this recommendation. So.
Thank you and the committee for all you've done. Right?
You're welcome.
If nothing else, I, uh, I'm moving on. Right, during, uh, unfinished business, I haven't seen HR hiring an update.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Uh, as, uh, Guy and Nathan, the council knows, we are to be interviewing a candidate. To, uh, tonight and possibly making an offer here at the council meeting. Uh, at this point, Guy and I are going to say we're having communication problems, telephone problems. We're hoping for the best. Uh, I called him, went to voicemail, I text him, and I emailed him, and I've not had any response back. Guy has done similar today and has not had a response. We're not throwing him under the bus yet, but, uh, he best have good excuses. Why he is incognito at the moment. So, uh, that being said, uh, I do have five candidates in queue. Uh, and I have already reached out to one this afternoon when I, when we couldn't get ahold of our, uh, number one candidate. And I'm waiting to hear back to set up an interview and we'll just pick the four in our, in our interviewing process and see what, what comes of it. Uh, we started this new campaign of, of looking for a candidate, uh, July fifth, right after the fourth. And, uh, it's been thirteen days. We've had twenty-seven candidates. Uh, and like I say, I have five in queue. We had one that we are going to make an offer to tonight. So we're having pretty good results from it. In total, our campaign started April third. We've actually had a hundred and twelve response, uh, resumes. And up with that, we've interviewed over ten percent of them. And we've had a couple of acceptable ones. If one is another, it didn't work out, or they didn't, they had another job offer that they prefer too closer to home. So, uh, we're still getting a good response. Uh, our running rate right now is two point one per day and resumes coming in and, and hopefully, uh, you know, if we're at a hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen might be the one that we, uh, that we get on, but. And so we, we have work to do. I got five in queue and hopefully we'll have to call an executive session soon to, uh, talk to a candidate. Any questions?
Now, I just want to say thank you, George and Guy, for all your work on this. I know these are very time-consuming tasks. I know. Um, I was at the fire department last week and, you know, kind of let them know that it's posted on the website if anybody knows or sees of anybody because they've got, you know, a lot of those volunteers in there. So I think that's what we all need to do is just continue our due diligence and come across, um, potential candidates or people that may know somebody. So thank you both. I know it's been very time-consuming. Hopefully we get this taken care of.
Well, my fear is that we keep going to this well and eventually it's going to start to dry out because what I, and I don't know if Indeed has screening policies where a person doesn't, can't apply. Does the same job twice, but at the date of these hundred and twelve, each one is unique. I've not had a double candidacy come in yet. So. It's a very interesting, uh, profit that Indeed has. And it's free. Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you, George. All right, moving on to new business, uh, A, A, police enforcement, right, first?
Well, we made some adjustments that were. New to the twenty-twenty-three calendar year. We offer some. Different pay to entice our deputies, all premium pay, to work during the hours we, as a council, selected. Between three PM and midnight, they could qualify for this premium pay. We saw a greater number of road, road time, water time, table time on the lake over that timeframe. Do want to acknowledge that we had some people bring some complaints to our attention. Um, because these complaints were different from what I had heard myself personally. I also reached out to some residents. So I contacted. Six people in the West Bay. I contacted two people in the East Bay, one near the public access, one on the North Shore of the East Bay. One in Barefoot Bay. One in, uh, two in the North Bay, two on the South Shore, and one on Round Lake. And I would like to report to Chris that I received ninety-three percent satisfactory reviews. So while we did receive some complaints. When I wanted to go do some double checking, I heard a lot of good. I did hear one where they wished for a little bit more visibility. But some of the things also came about during these discussions. I had three people comment that they noticed the DNR on the water. That they haven't seen them around in a while. I've heard numerous instances of where they saw them. Uh, one example would be. The Durango was across the street from the condos during a peak traffic time. And the person who told me about this said, I saw him there and I was so happy. They were there during the peak, during the peak movement when people were going to and from. And our Durango was right there. Heard about, uh, us being around prior to the parade for July first. That some residents noticed that the police vehicle was in the area and moving around prior to the parade. I thought that was good. Um, and one person was even pulled over on the water. So. When I reached around because I wanted to find out. What people felt about, the overall feedback I received was very good. And that was a total of fourteen people that I reached out to, uh, over the last few days to kind of gauge that. And that doesn't include some of the comments that were given to me prior to that. So there was other positive comments. And due to some of the complaints, I felt it was necessary to reach out to the different sections of the lake. And gauge some input from our community members. So I want to say thank you, Chris, from my results, from what I heard from people. They were very satisfied with the way things had changed.
And I'll just let everybody know, the person I'm talking about, they got pulled over on the water. So. We did have, I wasn't at the house. We did have a light out. And you know, morning, so we were, well. But then, uh, also, uh, we're serious though. Uh, this weekend I saw a police officer with a golf cart pulled over right by my house. Uh, an hour later, I saw somebody else pulled over. They're in the lake. So, uh, and over the Fourth of July, I felt like I saw the cops. Every, he's like, I, I totally agree. I just went for them.
But it seems also like this last week there is a lot greater presence or visibility. Maybe it wasn't more time, but it was more this. In the, uh, last seven days. We're, yeah, we're about three yards down from the place boat. So, you know, we can see it coming and going. Not that we're tracking it, but. Everybody started watching, so it's.
Oh, and I can attest to the fact that the premium pay has been, uh, being paid off to the, you know, marshals. So I believe that they've probably been saying. Hey, I'll get out of the water and go out in the boat. And I don't know if the premium pay had anything to do with that, but they have been, um, getting it. I believe that's on Christmas report.
No, and I think that I, I also received, um, comments because I think sometimes it's quality and quantity, you know, when you see them. Um, I know where we are, we have a pretty good visibility of people's everything exactly where Tom Marina Bay. Um, but I heard numerous positive comments about the visibility during the activity and the height of activity. People were pleased to see that. And I too have seen an increase in the conservation. And in fact, I've called them and thanked them, uh, because I think one of their perceptions is because we have a boat. They don't need to come up to Clear Lake as much as other areas because they think we have two, we have a, you know. Department on the water and then another one on the road. And it's like, no, it's the same one. If they are doing all of that. So. Um, and obviously you were at the, uh, Clear Lake Association meeting and the Conservancy, their fun run, so all of that fireworks segment. And you know, I, I too saw the. Chris was getting a text from me Saturday night. It sounded so. Well, it's, yes, long overdue, and I saw him and then I heard from the mafia words, but it's all, it was all good. It was nice to see. That during the dark that people were watching.
And on a final note, would like to ask the community for their continued involvement. As Molly just alluded to, our police force is unique a little bit in that they have responsibilities both on and off the water. Where they may be patrolling on the water and we may have residents. Where they may be patrolling on the water and we may have residents notice underage golf cart drivers. They need to reach out because once they reach out to the sheriff's department, they will know, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, if you guys have somebody on duty and they have a way to get in touch with that person and say, hey, you might be on the water, we need you on the line. Or vice versa, if it's the other direction and maybe we've got some underage kids dragging boats or things along those lines where we do have an officer on duty, however, they're just not necessarily where the infraction is, is taking place. So the community involvement is critical to helping us improve the nature. And I just asked that if you see something, say something. If it's an emergency, call nine one one. And if it's a non-emergency, call the sheriff's non-emergency number as there may not always be somebody in town called, but the sheriff's department can get a hold of Chris and our deputies to make sure they're aware of any situations.
And Chris did communicate that very clearly at the Clear Lake Association meeting.
And Jen put it on the newsletter, so I think we're trying to make it, but just taking another step and want to say it out loud in the meeting as well.
And while, uh, your bicycles are ready to go, everybody's out there, it's all ready, got helmets, got everything.
You know, they're trying your second.
They're supposed to ride it on on a run, uh, rain, because
This didn't rain.
Oh, and I also want to thank for the side that's out doing a wake laugh in Manhattan Island this weekend. Definitely saw a presence out there. Everybody loves her about, even that's, loves her about what her daughter, so thank you.
Anything else for Chris?
Not, we did things for.
Uh, moving on to business side of the B, I don't know what to say.
Guy, I have been working with Jessica from ERI on uh, rehabbing lift station at condos. We had, uh, one time, we had a pump, issue with a pump, we had stuff stuck in it. And when we were both there working on that, I noticed we had some groundwater seeping in, um, which got me thinking that, you know, we should probably start looking into this. So we've come up with, rather than carrying out and starting over, uh, after talking to MNC Trenching who installed it originally, they said that it would be a very bad idea to try to dig there again. If we can rehab the station that's there, then we are best bet. Um, they ran into a lot of water sand and had to do a lot of overdig. So that's when I got in contact with Jessica from ERI. We started coming up with a plan, uh, made a couple of visits out there. Kind of in reality, we want to do similar to what we did here at Town Hall, put in a smaller lift station to handle the flow while the main lift station's being rehabbed, um, and then that will stay as a vacancy. Because if that goes down, there is, the only backup plan is to call septic pumpers and call back then, then that is not a good one. So we kind of come up with doing a, and the lid that's on it now is only about a three quarter inch fiberglass lid. It's been in sun for eighteen years, so we're looking at a safety issue there. So, and then the pumps that are in there now just sit and free flow. They are not on rails, they are not attached. Um, so we looked at putting a rail system in similar to what our Liberty Grinder stations are and similar to what, what is out here. Um, and then we will have a concrete structure lid with a metal patch on it, just like our lift station up here. It'll make it all the way around safer, more serviceable. We're, I don't think we can run the same size of pumps that we have in our Liberty stations now. I think we're gonna have to have a little bigger one. But most of the time I can have those with, uh, student county waste district uses some that are that size that are Liberty's on rail system, worst case scenario, I can get them from them, what we would have in fiction on two, so then we will also have a backup back end.
You have a timeframe that you think about, uh, we were hoping October, November, I mean, when there's only two or three residents at the condos.
My question is too.
So. Yeah, so you would have do, do, so the person you talked to for the R, have they, you guys discussed costs or?
Yes. That is our rough cost was ninety-six thousand sixty-one dollars.
Guy, how long does it take to get everything that we need? So if we're talking, if we're working back from October?
That I don't know.
Roughly, would you say two months or two days?
I believe it takes two to three months.
Thank you.
The biggest thing will probably be the, the casting of the lid. Everything else is kind of, you know, I don't want to say generic, but you've summer months.
No, I'm just looking, um, where we are on the budget and where this is going to come out of and if that decision needs to be made tonight or if that can be made in the past.
So the, and like I said, we're gonna do the plan is to reline that because I have a fiberglass tank. And our plan is to reline it with the similar product to what we used on the lift station up here. So I was extremely impressed at how that worked.
Guy, how is the water getting in? How's groundwater coming in? It's extracted or is it coming through the top?
It appears to be coming through where the discharge is. Is what it appears to be and where the inlet is.
If you've received that, then there'll be a gasket or something to prevent it.
Yeah, okay, the discharge would be completely different than what is there now.
Okay. And so to clear, is there just one pump?
There may be.
Two primaries and then your proposal is to replace those pumps with rail.
System.
And then have an adjacent backup. And will that backup be outside the tank?
Yes, it'll be a standalone. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be one of our Liberty Grinders and it'll set off to the side of that. And when the whole project's done, that will serve as a overflow. So if it hits a certain level in there, it'll automatically
correct, I got you. Thanks.
Well, Nathan, this is sewer dollar, I believe we're talking about, so we need to look at the sewer budget, sewer case and see where we stand and as we went through the process for the rates and everything. And do you remember what sort of outliers were factored in for the sewer system when we were considering the rates? Now, kind of putting you on the spot, sorry, but don't know if you remember that off the top of your head?
Uh, this particular project was identified during that exercise, Brent, so, uh, so the rates were adjusted to, uh, uh, cover this project, however. You know, the rates aren't an instantaneous kind of, uh, you know, uh, account of money. Uh, they, they accumulate over time. That I'm, I'm a little bit less, uh, uh, remembering. Um, whether that was a year or two years or whatever. Uh, the other thing that I would bring forward, if, uh, if, if, if during our budgeting discussions, uh, we should, uh, con- consider ARP funds, we still have yet to, to really, um, uh, finalize our recommendation on ARP. The only thing out of that seventy-six thousand that, uh, that we received, I think we've only got I don't know, thirty, thirty K that we've agreed not to exceed on the GPS and I think in actuals it's about half of that, so. Um, during our budget discussions, we should banter that around a bit and trade that off if that's not a better use of the money.
Would it be possible for you and Guy and George to have some discussion on this before our special section next week? Cause if we have a special session next week on the road information, we could determine where this money's gonna come from.
You have to, Nathan, now, Nathan, speak.
Nathan, too, I'm sorry, uh, cause like right now in the ARP, we've got sixty-five thousand in the sewer operating. We've got a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we might have to pull from both of those depending. Would, is that an option, Nathan, Guy, George, Dan?
I, I can't answer it. I don't know what they, restrictions on those.
Yeah, I'll have to look into exactly what funds we can pull from where and what what funds are allowed to be used, but I think what Dan said, the ARP funds, I think that'd be a really good way to utilize those funds and maybe offset some of the costs, um, for this. So, uh, yeah, I'm gonna have to do a little bit more thinking just where is going to make the most sense to pull funds from, but uh, like I just said, I think the ARP plus would be a very good place to start.
So if we can table this discussion, um, and look at ARP and the sewer operating fund and determine and that would still meet Guy's timeline of if we did this either at the special meeting next week or worst scenario if I had to go to the August meeting. Does that seem reasonable, Guy? Okay.
I see the real need here that we need to do this, so it's just how we, do we have funds?
Oh, and by that time, you could probably get a better idea of time, timeframe for all the materials.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would just concur with the comments that this project is, is clearly showing a risk to the community and needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. I would also say that, uh, I, I have the utmost confidence that the money is present. Uh, it's really more of a, uh, you know, how do, how do we want to maximize the money uh, in the use for the town, so it's, it's not a if, if there's money, it's, it's how to maximize the results of the money, so. Let me know, uh, let me know, Nathan, when, when you want to get together, but that's, that, that falls under the category of, of basically the interviews that we want to do with each department.
Yep, absolutely. We're gonna start getting those set up here ASAP.
Okay, anything else? Not moving on, monthly reports, uh, financial report, Nathan.
All right, uh, for the financial reports, there's been the fund revenue and appropriation reports available. Now, there's been some uh, action with the appropriation report, um, it was discovered that, uh, the new appropriation numbers for the budget year twenty twenty-three were never put in at the beginning of the year. The eighteen seventy-two notice with the new numbers for the budget for twenty twenty-three was received in the summer night. And for whatever reason, the numbers never got put in to the system, so this has been rolled over with the previous budget number. So what I've been doing for the last week or so, I've been going through the appropriation, adjusting everything and getting everything back to the correct place where they should. So at this point, if you look at the appropriation report, you will see the adjustment line in the middle. You'll see all those adjustments that I had to make going down for every different appropriation account. Now, not every account got adjusted. Um, now the next issue is that there were three new line items that were created for this budget year. Uh, there's one in law, he for professional services. There was one in CCD for ground improvements and there was one other one in George.
Uh, they both, uh, we had two in law enforcement, uh, one of the office you put, you had the professional services.
So with those line items, if you don't put in an estimate at the beginning of the year for an amount that could be going into those accounts, you cannot use those accounts. It's a security and a safety thing that DLGF works with Keystone, um, it's to protect municipalities so that a treasurer can't create an account, close an account, put money into an account, take money out of an account. So every account that I have access to is set up at the beginning of the year. So the one account that I'm worried about, so you guys, the town council last year appropriated fifty-four thousand dollars for ground maintenance. Because that line item did not have an estimated, um, number put in at the beginning of the year, I cannot use that fund. So there's fifty-four thousand dollars that was appropriated for the ground maintenance at CCD that we need to decide where we're gonna put that one, cause I cannot use that appropriation by. So I didn't want to just make that decision on my, I can't make that decision on my, on my own, but I wanted to at least bring this to council so that everybody's aware. So that's the long and short of what happened. Uh, everything is fixed at this point. It took me quite a while, but I've got everything fixed. But the only thing that we need to worry about is, I think it's four hundred dollars on the professional services and law. The fifty-four thousand dollars in the CCD for ground maintenance. Um, and then the other one I think is for four hundred dollars, but the fifty-four thousand dollars is something that we, I think should come to a decision together to make where you want me to put them.
So I understand it would have to stay in the CCD fund and invested go into an account that existed at the first of the year, correct? And so that takes us down to one, two, three, four, five accounts. And well, and we're looking at, uh, an expense account called ground improvement and our five choices are attorney's fees, I'd say no. Engineering and survey, no. Professional services, maybe. Street repair, maybe. Cheating equipment. We gotta, I, we have to get, we have to put it there or we will not be able to use any funds.
Right, you won't be able to exceed the money. Because I can't deposit it into that
Right, right.
ground improvement fund, so I need to deposit it into one of the other funds, otherwise the total budget number is that will be less than fifty-four thousand with the account directly.
Well, maintenance, ground maintenance would be a professional service.
I think professional services is probably the most odd category. So it would allow me to use it and force it.
I mean, if I look at these categories.
Yeah.
I don't see it as, I mean, that would be mine, but I mean, maintenance is a service.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Dana.
Thank you.
Good job.
Dan, you have a floor?
Yeah, just making sure I was off mute. Uh, the fifty-four thousand was approved by council for the, uh, for the parking lot at Town Hall. So that's where the money is approved to be spent, spent only on that, that particular project.
That's, I would put for street repairs and.
So whatever, whatever account, you know, is appropriate, uh, for that, uh, that task, but that, that's what, that's what the money was appropriated for.
Thank you, Dan.
I will deposit street repairs, CCDs for more.
Yes, it's Molly, I'd like to make a motion to move the fifty-four thousand dollars that was budgeted twenty twenty-three lawn maintenance fund and move that to the CCD street repair fund.
This is Brent, I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and second, any further discussion? I'll vote in favor, signify, or say no?
I, I.
Bye.
I wish you here.
Uh, and I think that's pretty much everything I had. Guys, are there any questions about the revenue refund or? We need to deal with the five hundred dollar professional services. Yeah, or, uh, law enforcement. And there's only one choice, uh, and that's office equipment. And there's only one choice, uh that's office equipment. The account only has uh one active, excuse me, the fund only has one active account.
Who are we looking at, George?
Uh you're on page three. Uh. The uh. Yeah, twenty two twenty eight, but numbered law enforcement.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I guess office support. That's certainly, that's the only fund available, right?
Now, typically what is professional services in law? You know?
Well, there's a training fund. Like one of the classics for training is somewhere else there, but uh. Plus, that was pretty much, you can just like maybe the teams and stuff like that or um. Yeah, there is a dude that I do pay, like there are students from the. And then the uh legal defense.
That's where I was for the. Well, yeah, if you guys need to make a motion.
No, you know, it's coming.
It's going into, uh we're gonna, yeah, overall, all right. Uh I propose that we. Move the five hundred dollars from professional services of law enforcement fund twenty two twenty eight. Uh to office equipment, that'd be five hundred dollars. A motion around the second.
It's Molly on second that.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, person.
Nathan, there's another hundred dollars that uh you need to uh put in office equipment, so your adjustment would be six hundred dollars total. Uh that that account uh didn't get adjusted. For the budget, obviously, it didn't get adjusted to the budget. It's short by hundred and then this would be five, so it gives a hundred dollars to just. And that should bring the appropriations in line with the twenty twenty three budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did we skip over one of the things of the new business?
Oh, electronics cycle. We're doing. And electronics is like everything. Jen puts this together. August seventh ninety two, you can bring in um. Any kind of electronics with a few exceptions, you can bring it right here to the town hall. Uh washroom.
So they'll have something here just for the one day.
Yes.
All right, a roll of dumpster out here. And from the town's perspective, uh Robert and I will be doing some house painting. There's some electronics that we talked about. The last month before uh in the basement that we're gonna paint out. Uh there's an item or two in this closet here. And if anybody in the town hall knows of any other electronics that's collecting dust, let us know and we'll ferret it out.
Uh that's everything I have.
Uh just hang on, let me raise my hand. Do I need to raise my hand? Okay, I just wanted to make a comment that uh Jen um Jen uh. Put together a welcoming package uh in that uh there's uh a collection. Holistic collection of how to how to dispose of um all of the items. That uh typical households have. Um so I noticed on that last flyer that it was, you know, saying that there were some exclusions. I think that the flyer would be more helpful if. If it if it's excluded on electronics collection day. That it would then follow up and say, this is however, this is where it can go. And she's got all that information. Uh because I worked with her on it.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
All right. Chris, uh I'm going to June, it was a hundred and seventy nine and a half hours of work, uh I remember fifty five miles driven and it was ten and a half hours on the lake. Uh America serves, uh police department had six cases, sheriff's office had two cases in the town and four cases in the township. Uh there were six traffic violations, one golf cart violation and five voting violations. Uh nineteen golf cart inspections, seven vehicle inspections and there were, for the month of June, there was thirteen and a half hours of pre-mia pay. Which was on June thirtieth, which was the first day of that. Uh six pieces that the police department had, it was one alarm, one juvenile problem, one property damage crash, one structure fire. Um and two medical calls. The sheriff's office in town had one alarm and one suspicious complaint. And the township they had. One suspicious, one trespassing, one personal injury crash and one found in space.
Can you expand on the uh the uh the six crack violation, five forty, the the nature more?
Uh right now, I'm broken down. Right now, most of them probably for. Uh speeding uh would be most of the traffic violations, um a golf cart violation. Um was for, you're wrong, this one, the I believe that was for not having the. Golf cart registered. And then the voting violations, uh I'd have to check. I think it's mainly that we sniped over those.
And uh are those citations or warnings or we don't know the difference?
Uh it's combination of warnings or citations.
The suspicious and the juvenile problem, are there anything we should be concerned about as a community?
Anything else? Right. Fire department, correct?
All right. So for the detailed report, total time of third lake incidences, we had nine. Five of which were mutual aid, two medical assistance, one fire alarm, one service call. Within the township, we had one downed power line and one vehicle with injury. At this time, uh we would also like to present to council. An update on the negotiations with the Fremont Fire Department. Molly and myself have had several meetings with them. Over the past few months.
It was out there. I accidentally clicked the wrong button.
So like I said, Molly and I have been working with the Fremont Fire Department. To work to the common goal, we've let everybody know already that we had agreed to. Uh work towards a four-year contract again, and with that, I'll let Molly take over the.
Yeah, absolutely. Robert, if you can just go to the next slide, please. Um this just portrays what our current agreement is with the town of Fremont. It is a four-year contract. And it was the first time we embarked on a four-year contract, and this is now a best practice by the town of Fremont. They're asking all their partner communities. To go to multi-year contracts. Um as of right, uh the current contract um did meet the fund, the minimum requirements. As Nathan stated earlier, half the monies are paid mid-year, the remaining the end of the year. Our current ski fee schedule, as you can see, was thirty, thirty-two, thirty-four, we're currently paying thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Uh Robert, you want to go to the second? Some of the considerations as we negotiate a contract with the Fremont Fire Department. Is um public safety should be proactive. This is something that I think all of us in our community agree. Um mental health impact has become much more significant um. Now everywhere, but also locally. Um in the past um year. The fire department, our fire department in Fremont has had fourteen traumatic deaths. Seven cardiac arrests, seven um DOAs. So this is very, this just goes to what they're experiencing. When they're going on calls. Mental health first aid is now a re- is required in public safety. Currently, Fremont now does debriefings. They also have brief counseling dogs. I think most people in the community are familiar with those dogs. But they're now using those where they didn't when we first started with these contracts. Uh Fremont also has a chaplain on staff. Um he has only been on staff for three months and so far he's been utilized in three calls. So they're averaging one a month. This is a chaplain that is licensed to um work in this area, but it's also affiliated. With one of the churches in the county. If you want to go ahead, thanks, Robert. Um right there on our left, um all of you that do not know, this is our fire chief, Eric Huffnagle. Um stop in and say hi anytime. They love company. Just to give you a perspective, I think this is really important as we talk about the fire department, just like we do with the marshals and the deputies. Um the fire department currently only has three full-time employees. They survive on thirty-three volunteers that have full-time jobs other places. The budget for the Fremont Fire Department is for twenty-five volunteers. So they're trying, they, you know, manage. They keep more volunteers on less money. A volunteer is typically paid right now in Fremont, fourteen dollars a call. That's not an hour, that's a call. If a call lasts twenty minutes, it's fourteen dollars. If a call like the drowning that we had out here lasts three days. They get fourteen dollars for that incident. Um the Fremont Fire Department is the largest staff in the county. They also maintain a sixty-five percent retention. They try to always have five firefighters available to go on a call. The age ranges for the Fremont Fire Department are between twenty-one and sixty, with the average being forty. This is very important because. Some fires locally, the higher that number gets, um imagine going up the ladders with some of the fire hoses and what that entails. We are very fortunate that the local businesses support the fire, the volunteer firefighters. If those. If firefighters are working their full-time job and they get a fire call, they are allowed to leave. Their day job to go volunteer and tackle a fire. So we are blessed to have businesses that allow that to happen. The minimum that are needed on a call are four. You can't send a truck out without having four. Ideal scenario is to have six. National career expectancy is three to five years. Fremont, it's much higher. One family in our community has eight members on the fire department, so imagine that mother, you know, when they go out. Ideal full-time would be five. That would be an increase of two hundred thousand dollars to the Fremont Fire Department. So I just share that to give you all a perspective of who these people are, what they're doing, the sacrifices they're making. And it does take a minimum of four people to run any department and right now with three full-time. They're not getting their pay time off in and it's a real, that's the challenge. They get yelled at by, you know, because they're like everybody, you're not. Well, you got to take time off, but we're needed. So I'm going to turn it over to Brent to go through some of the expenses.
These expenses here were gathered to show the increased cost that the Fremont Fire Department has incurred. Over the last several years, and you can take that first line and look at it and see from two thousand and eighteen to twenty twenty-two. The cost was one of the engine, the frost, the main engine, almost double. From two thousand and twelve to twenty twenty-three, we're looking at a triple in cost. We all have seen our costs rise, um whether it's fuel, whether it's. Uh supplies for the office, whether it's. P P E, which you can also see is done with personal or personal protective equipment. The air mask that they utilize, the training that they go through, all their costs are going up like all of ours. And that takes us to the next slide as well. The Fremont Fire Department, due to its location. Has to have unique features and equipment to support the area. Some of those things have been utilized out of the clear lake. As Molly was talking about with the recent incident on the south shore, we had the fire department out here. With their boat, which is not always something that a fire department has. And they were out here with personnel, they were out here with, I believe they had to borrow the drone.
They did at the time.
They had to borrow the drone at the time, but they have actually purchased a new drone. To utilize, should it be needed again within our community. So on top of all the increased costs that the fire department is seeing. They also have a unique set of circumstances around the community due to our location and around here. So they also. Want to make sure their response times are at industry best. They want to make sure our residents know insurance companies call them on a, what did I mean?
Four, four calls a week.
Four calls a week, yeah, it's almost a day, almost. Every business day, they're getting calls from insurance companies and they explain the features that they have. What separates them from other fire departments. And it can play an impact. Uh moving on to the next slide. This is where we're getting to the months. Um as you guys could see, the last four-year project started at thirty, went. Thirty K in twenty twenty, went to thirty-two in twenty twenty-one, thirty-four in twenty twenty-two and thirty-six. For twenty twenty-three. We are looking to propose a ten percent increase from twenty. Three to twenty-four and then a six percent increase over the following three years. And this is in an effort to support the increased cost that Fremont has for its equipment, employees. Retention, everything that's needed, so we have a fire department that is ready to help, should that come about.
So council, have any questions?
First, the trucks, how how often do they fix?
Yes, um so the. The one truck that they are, um the ladder truck has a lifespan of fifteen years. And they have embedded it so it can last, they're doing things to stretch that. Um everything is used longer. Um on the uh slide that Brent shared, they're also selling one of their old trucks to a community in need. Um so they are very, it's very important to them to donate, no, that's right. So it varies. I mean, as long as they can and they're extending the lifespan, but they're they are, you know, thorough on their maintenance. And do what they can to extend that life.
They've even went to the point when discussing with Molly, I mean, they talked about taking on some of the their own. To help alleviate some of the costs and stretch things out.
Wouldn't we expect to see a contract?
Uh when we we take the numbers to um Fremont and then Fremont puts a contract together. It come, it's initiated by the town of Fremont, so it has to go to their council and then it comes to us. Is the timing and so since this is due at the end of the year, that's why we are moving this forward. We don't want to wait till December because. And our council days are now on the same day.
So that was, that was the last contract, George, just so you.
It's, there's not a lot to it. It it's not going to take an attorney long.
Do you think, too much?
Oh, no, we we want this one crossed off, but to-do list by September, September, I would say at at the latest.
Two months.
Yeah, so we agree on the numbers tonight and that's when we'll ask promotion for that. We'd like to take these numbers to Fremont so they can initiate.
They do a lot of other.
Yes, they do.
Have similar numbers.
Um they all have been given a minimum um start because the state has not given the L I T fund amount yet. Um and actually, there are. There's, uh if if there's variability, the percentages are not shared on what everybody's doing, what everybody's contract is. But I can tell you, one community made. A donation that would encompass two of our years total, and that was a donation on top of what they. So what we're. What we're proposing is. Well, but it's reasonable for what where we are and that's why Brent and I are proposing where we are.
Dan, yes, I'm scared.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
My turn.
Dan, you have a question?
Yeah, Molly and Brent, good work. Thanks for at least teeing up something for us to look at. The questions that I have is the, you know, the percentage is shown on this slide seven. You know, seem perfectly reasonable, given the increases in costs, you know, that we've, we've all experienced now, there are areas of expenses. But it's, what's not clear to me is, is it seems significantly less than, than the, the, like slide five where you were showing such significant increases, you know, in those examples. So I'm not, I'm having a little bit trouble
Yes.
Understanding how the Fremont Fire Department is managing these, these, these what appear to be financial risks and saliency of the department. So can you help me with that?
Yes, and I can. Keep in mind, we contract with them for services. We don't own them. The town of Fremont owns them. And so they pay a much bigger percentage of it, much more significant. They are, their budget, they are operating under budget because of donations and volunteers. The fire chief has over, I think he has over two months of vacation time that he hasn't taken. He can't carry it forward, he just doesn't take it. He, they, they make personal sacrifices and they don't use their time. And that's why they do the things they do to help other fire departments by selling their vehicles to more, to communities in need. But what every community, they don't ask a community to give more than they can. I mean, if we went in and gave them twenty percent every year, they would be elated, but that is not the expectation. Did that answer your question, Dan?
It, it does. Is that sustain, is that a sustainable model? Is that, you know, the way, the way it's been, you know, for decades?
This is not the way, actually, this is not the way it's been for decades. Typically, what the town of Clear Lake, prior to the last contract, we would give them the minimum and that would be all we would give them. So that's where four years ago, when we did the contract, we went with a higher percentage that first year and then went down to a lower percentage. And that's why on this contract, the proposal is to jump to ten percent and then go to the six percent and we would stay within the minimum. If we decide at the end of the year that we wanted to make a donation to the Fremont Fire Department, we could do that. And that's what some of the towns do. There was one community that donated everything that was the entire balance of their rainy day fund to the Fremont Fire Department. So there are things that we can do, but we also have a budget to make. Brent and I feel very confident in the numbers that we're proposing tonight. We have a very good relationship with the Fremont Fire Department. If two years down the road, we want to change these percentages, we absolutely can. You can always do an amendment to that contract.
Yeah, no, I, I think you guys did a good job and I'm not really harping over the percentages so much as where, where does that put us in our risk posture relative to this service? That's what I'm struggling with. It's, it's not, it's not so much that this isn't a good answer today. It's really, I'm looking forward, you know, what does it do to our long-term risk posture with this, with this service? And, and I'm struggling a little bit with that.
We are not at risk with this service. We have a very strong relationship with the Fremont Fire Department. We've got people in the audience that support the fire department on a regular basis. So the town of Clear Lake's relationship and services is not at risk with the Fremont Fire Department. I think I feel very confident in saying that. The, the thing that they challenge is the volunteers and with the mental health concerns. And I would say, you know, I personally feel that we should consider making a donation at the end of the year. But that's not part of this contract discussion.
And Dan, when it comes to the risk factor, some data to throw at you would be the mutual aid assist that the Fremont Fire Department does. When you compare that to the other fire departments, we are the one, Fremont is the one they call when they need help. Fremont is the one that, to Molly, to, or to Molly's early slide, we have the largest staff in the county as well. They're not going anywhere.
Okay, yeah, feeling blessed about that.
The, there may be changes that need to be made, but the Fremont Fire Department is going to be there and they're there for a reason because of the dedication of the volunteers and the full-time employees that they have.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it, appreciate the dialogue.
I mean, there was, it was probably one year ago now, there was talk of a fire history, which was causing a lot of heartache for our communities, but other communities.
That is not on the table right now.
We specifically asked.
That would cost us a whole lot more.
I remember a long version.
So that, that means that I'd like to propose a motion to move forward and present these numbers as an offer to the Fremont Fire Department.
All right, I have a motion for a second. This is George, I'll second the motion. Motion and a second. Any further discretion?
Yeah, one quick question. Brent, would you remind me which fund this, this this budget is budgeted in?
LIT, I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
I think it's two-two-four-oh.
Hey, do you remember this one you had?
Two-two-four-zero.
Molly found it, two-two-four.
It's LIT.
Yes.
LIT.
Public safety.
Yeah, and, and do you know what's currently in there, what, what the delta increase? Is that the percentages that you're, you're showing on this slide?
It would be a ten percent increase between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
All right.
And then the three following, subsequent, the three years after that, it would be six percent each year.
Is there any rush with making this offer? Are we at risk of allowing us to get through the budgeting, initial budgeting process?
Well, Fremont has their council meeting on the same day that we do. So it's not like we could take it, approve it one night and then it goes to their council the next week. So Brent, we could wait a month. But we really don't want to wait any longer than that. Because it has to go to the Fremont Council. If they have questions and come back to us with something different, we don't anticipate that, but we should allow that for a cushion. I don't think this is the service that we want to have a gap or delay and wait till November.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I was just looking at the reserves on that fund and it's tight. So it's, it's not, I can't sit here right now and say that these are affordable numbers for us.
Well, and part of the, part of the reason it's tight is because when the budget was carried forward to twenty, the twenty-two budget was carried forward to twenty twenty-three, the wrong number was carried forward. Yes, it wa, it did not include the increase from the previous year.
Eighty-eight versus, yeah, it was twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand off. Okay.
Two thousand.
Two thousand, should have been two thousand off.
LIT was sixty-six versus is actually overstated. Actually overstated by twenty-two thousand between what the, what the council approved in October versus what was in the appropriations report prior to the corrections that Nathan went through, so. So this is, I'm just, so my point, I'm just, I'm confused enough that I don't know without getting into the, the budgeting process, you know, and that's why I asked, do we have to make the decision tonight to preserve the service? If that answers, yes, we'll figure it out. But if we can afford ourselves some time, then I'm going to request a little bit of time.
I'm, I'm going to suggest, I, I understand where you're coming from, Dan, but the Molly's point on having different municipalities involved, I feel it's in our best interest to at least present it to them now. That way, in case there needs to be a back and forth, we've got that time to be able to accomplish that. With the meetings being on the same days, it adds an extra conflict because it's not like we can, if we do have some sort of negotiation, that it can be taken care of in one month. It's already extended out too. And if we have to have a back and forth, now we're back out to four months. And now we're pushing, sorry.
The difference is less than four thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm confused. I don't see the difference. We have a budget, a current budget of twenty twenty-three of thirty-six thousand. And that's what our contract currently is. Twenty twenty-four, we're going to re-budget. And we will reflect that, so I don't understand why we will be tight here. Number one. Number two, I agree that we should take this to Fremont shortly, so it's in their August agenda, hopefully approved, and then it'll be on our September agenda to vote on the contract and do what you need to do. But financially, it appears that the money's there, unless I'm overlooking something.
Well, if there's a problem with this year's monies, that should not affect the conversation that we're discussing today.
Well, I still have a motion and a second on the floor, so I think, any other questions? If not, we're ready to take both. All those in favor signify with a nine. I, oh, same sign?
I'm abstaining, Darren.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you for the comments, Dan.
Motion carries. All right, moving on, item D, zoning administrator, Robert?
Thank you. I have kind of a small month in June and then of course I picked up in July, so don't worry about that. But I had two permits for the last one, which twenty for the year, that doesn't. Anyways, twenty for the year, and then I had two administrative subdivisions. One combining three lots, one combining two lots, taking care of non-conforming lots, so that's nice to get rid of those. Our next meeting for the plan commission is the first. We do have some stuff coming up there. Feedback forms are on the what's typed for that, so that's out and about for the public and then a BCA hearing on the eighth, which the feedback stuff for that will be out tomorrow for a variance request. Yes, that's my, must be a good time for you to say something, but we work, we do a ton of strong, as you guys are aware, the BDA form and the PC form, some, some feedback, but with the PC form, with a few things are kind of left hanging over there. We decided, I decided to move forward and do the press front. And we'll see how it works out. So and as far as my updates, some following up with open IOPs, my violation list, sixty-six was clearly dragged, that is actually completed now. The shed was not removed, but it was repaired. I talked to them actually today. I also talked to Hughes, Jerry Hughes today. He plans on having the issues that were brought to our attention taken care of by this weekend. He understands and he, he, he was apologetic about it and he'll get taken into care right away. So and then the other issue I have going on and I won't go, I won't go into too much detail on this because we're still working with our legal counsel, but one-on-one billing courts that did have to issue a subpoena for a moment. You guys are aware what's going on outside of that, but because I'm working with legal counsel, I'm just gonna leave it at that. We're trying to come to a remedy, so. And outside of that, that's it.
Yeah, I've got a couple, Robert, on your report, is there a particular reason that the cases coming up aren't listed on here with the case number and what it is?
Uh, that was on my report, all the stuff I do is past stuff, so and, and next month's report, I'll have that.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's how I've been doing it. If you guys would like him to start including it.
Well, I think when you say that there's the next meeting is going to be eight-one, it might be.
Beneficial, I think.
I mean, that, that's something for you and Bill to discuss.
I'll, I'll cover that one, I.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And then one of my other questions, just in light of some of the requests that are coming up is I know when we've had requests previously, there was always the discussion, and I don't know if you've gotten resolution from my cops on the number of individuals, how many can provide a feedback form per household?
We haven't finalized that information yet.
That might be something that when you do get that finalized, to put that on there as well. So you're not getting four from a household, whatever that number is.
A whole bunch of.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
The plan was the, they, the, the rules of procedures and the public feedback under the public nursing process and then add in that requirement. So I did propose a memo on that. We just never really moved forward with trying to finalize that quite yet.
I'm just thinking with everything coming back that may save you some if.
Right, and I'll be able to extrapolate the information and kind of say, hey, this is what I found out. We'll, we'll be able to use that data going forward, especially with this news, this new process that we're trying to do. And we'll see how that works out, so.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else? Mr. President, I would like to move back to the fire department for one moment. We did have another thing come to light that I would like to give John the microphone. He has helped out substantially on this. During our visits to the Fremont Fire Department, Molly and I expressed how happy the community was when they came out here and did the training. I don't know if anybody remembers. I think it was the first year of the pandemic where they were doing the fire over the road over by the yacht club. We had all the kids around, everybody was, everybody seemed to have a good time, enjoyed seeing them using the equipment. And on top of that, they were training to use the equipment. They were proving things out. So John's got an update for the next training exercise that he wanted to provide, so I I'd like to make a motion to open it to the public, so John can give us an update on this.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
This is George, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a nine? Oh, same sign, motion carries. It's open to the public.
Thank you, council. Thank you on your fire discussion. Fremont has the best fire department in the county. Without any question, it's better to that, it's better running and it's better equipped. You think that angle is better, it is not. deficiencies, I, I'm an inspector. I'm a snooker, I'm a snooker. I go there when every time they have their annual semi-annual test on ladders and on equipment, non-hoses, and I watch what is being done and I record that myself in my mind to watch what's going on. We have a jewel of a department. The risks we have here, the personnel, not the contract. They like us, but the personnel is an issue which we all have to get because they don't rely on. Volunteers, every volunteer in the last three years. They're enormously long. Monday mornings, I typically at the fire department, and this past Monday was not an exception. And they mentioned that Bonnie and Brett had been there. Pick, I picked up on that. I said, okay, what are we gonna do? He said, well, this coming Sunday, we're gonna have a. Before the training session out of Clear Lake. I said, let's make something out of it. So that's going, I've given you a copy of it. So, so called, noted in the much, the howling, it's so quick. What this is, the new drawing, the previous one had to be towed behind a boat and it was very. Primitive in some respects. The new one, they really only done testing on it in the swimming pool. They've never been out on the lake. It's new, it's new to them, it's new technology. And it would solve the problem what we had two years ago because it can, it has eyes that move. And it can go deep and it can look under ledges where the body was found in fact. I can't say it's gonna solve all the problems, but they, it's a learning curve for them. And it's a chance for us to go out and go look and support them, at least say hi and get an idea of what this thing looks like. And how it's operated. So it's not gonna be really spectacular. Um, they, I, I said, let's, let's do a demo, let's go yellow raincoat in the lake and see if we can get it shipped. I don't want to. I didn't want to write that because we don't know. He said, so really, it's a true training session in addition to a demo. But it's a magnificent piece of equipment, which the county. Has been thankful for a group of volunteers. And the dive team, they're not paid, they're volunteers. They raise money on their own to get this stuff. This comes not from tax money, not from municipal stuff. This is the individual people like you and me and townships and other places like that. Who come together to support this one piece of equipment. So just letting you know, it's going on Sunday at six o'clock. See you there.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. So, uh, make a motion unless anybody else would like to discuss fire, open it up again at the end of the. At the end of the meeting. Make a motion to close and say here none.
Molly, I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a five percent nine? Oh, the same sign.
Thank you.
All right, the item D zoning administrator's report, Robert, or no, no. Superintendent's report, guy.
Um, I worked in a total of a hundred and thirty-nine hours for the. June, I had parish out for three grand or three times to help with grinders. I had zero road cut. Permits, zero down permits and two letters of non-objection. Had thirty-nine locates, five alarm calls. And I replaced four grounders, I set up one. Or repaired one, set up four, um. I have four set up, ready to go in, thirteen box. And. I have seventeen total pumps on hand. That has changed dramatically since last weekend. Uh, average failure flow was sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven gallons per day. Uh, sewer truck put a hundred miles on that this month and the street truck guy put a hundred and fifty-six.
And they from that comment, we saw a spike in pumps going out?
Yes, mostly this weekend. We also had a significant spike in gallons pumped, it almost doubled. From the month before, correct, and it'll be even higher this month. Body count not raining water, yeah, coming in. We've only had two and a half inches of rain. That is a significant spike. Uh, only other question, uh, just my clarity, I don't know what a letter of non objection. That means, so the county will. Contact me and want to make sure that I have no objection to usually a well being put on a property. Okay, is most generally what it is. Or.
To the county, county request.
Somebody's gonna put a deck on or something like that, that's, they won't mind. Basically, for me to say, I don't have a problem.
His non-objection letters resemble my AP numbers typically.
Okay, yes, uh, because we've both had the time. Thank you, I just didn't know what it was. Thanks.
I just have a question. No, it's just, I'm sharing feedback from the Clear Lake Association, um, meeting is. There was a, a comment about the tree trimming, especially over at West Clear Lake and Penner. That some of that may need addressed, that it's overgrowing.
Why are you, why are you spurring to the curve going to the right?
Depends on which way you're going.
If you're headed north, then you go to make a right curve. That has been trimmed once already and it is being trimmed strategically.
Okay, well, it's causing some visibility concerns with some of the residents.
Yes. That is already, that has already been discussed also. It is in process.
Thank you.
So.
I'm just providing the information I heard.
Yep, one. I got one, and I don't know if you can answer. Little, what is it, nine twenty-five goes along a little long?
Yep.
It's county, that's a county road, but we do have residents that utilize that road. And they seem to shut the road down. Without any advance notice or anything for construction.
You talk to the county highway department, they do what they want.
Okay.
I went to go to work one morning and I get to the culvert down the road from my house and there's hurricanes across. I have to turn around and drive all the way back to eight twenty-seven through Fremont, which was even more fun because I couldn't go that way either.
I was just curious if there was something, okay.
No, they, the county tells me absolutely nothing.
Maybe we first. Someone on the website, if they gave you, and then somebody else.
I get as much heads up and then as I do Nitsco, this Nitsco I leaky closed today. They were retiring a gas service that I've been locating for over nine months. Every two weeks, I locate it and they finally retired it today. One at five oh one still does not make it retired. And I've been looking at.
Anything else we're gonna? All right, I am, uh, out to my brother reports.
I just, um, I attended the Clear Lake Association meeting, as you all know, a couple of things that I haven't, um. One, the authentication app that they could use, um. To announce their annual meeting, if they could use a reach alert for that. I thought that was a really good plan, so I'm just sharing that. One of those and, um. John, five, well, it was following for that test, so he'll keep on us. Um, to make sure we get the regular out in a timely fashion. And, uh, there were conversations about paint cans and old paint cans. We're to take all that information and I know we've directed folks to the website on where. Materials can go.
Anything else? Uh, we're, we're working on the budget, Nathan and Dan and myself, uh, we're gonna be meeting with department heads very shortly. Uh, maybe giving the word out to the individuals.
Dan, anything from you?
Uh, no, thanks, Karen.
All right. Moving on, uh, general discussion. Um, I just have one thing, uh, follow up to Goose Roundup this year, that, um, assuming you were out on the water.
I was in Portland.
Uh, Goose Roundup. Did happen, it happened on the thirtieth. And we had people on the water and we had everything set up and the goose decided they would fly this year. Which is, you know, really strange, but we. Basically set the date next year or two weeks earlier. And it all really has to do with when they hatch, because I was on Zoner Golf Course. Ran into several. Uh, family and none of them could fly. So it, it's yet, it depends on what they're gonna hatch, but we'll try a little bit earlier next year. Thanks to all the people, and this is probably the largest group I have on shore. In years. So. The good news is there were only twelve of them. So, not the seventy, the hundred that have been in here.
I seen them because they, uh, making a mess of a bridge here.
Thanks, I saw them too. My five-year-old now knows how to go out on the deck and go shoot. And slap her hands for a lot.
Think she got him, right? Took a hundred off.
So anyway, I, I finished up the paperwork with the VNR this morning, so. Of that issue where we didn't turn that article. Commendation for them that they received it, so. Good to go.
Very good.
And I believe it is June the fifteenth. It's the middle of Friday, I'm sure, so mark your calendars if you want to. Deal with the really.
I just, I just, I just love the fact that our council president's run around the lake chasing Easter out.
I can say that there are fewer people that get in a cage with them. I'm, I'm taking volunteers all the time. Gotta be quick with your hands, so. All right, anything else? Nope, open it up to the audience. Yes, John.
And we'll do our six, I spill them after tree trimming along our roads to trim them up and back. Up to fifteen feet, cut off, three feet from the road, cut off. But hopefully you can put that into the budget. You may not be able to do it all in one year, but certainly if you allocate. Certain amount of dollars, we can achieve pieces as we go along.
I do have an appropriation fund with some monies in there for tree trimming and tree removal.
And we're gonna need to work with guy to schedule it, we've got higher or whatever needs to be done, but there's another tree that's. It's a safety factor, so it's fire, in the fire department, trucking bigger than these trees. And we, they're messing them and stuff in school boxes and trucking off, like, really hurry, we. Have a plan, if you will, this everything else is planned here. But at least they've got enough money to go for a tree trimming along the road.
Uh, one of the other avenues that we really need to utilize in that is, uh. If the power lines go through there, that is.
They just have had tree trees out here. Was that Whosburg with Catholic Church? Probably, yeah.
But they, they came out after the one ice storm. They, they were trimming, but that is, I mean, I know from our, our business that it is tough. A thing that we provide for free. So we should try free first.
And I have been in contact with our local lineman, it's up here all the time. And he's been pushing extremely hard to get. Stuff taken care of.
Like what was Arkin over there?
Yeah.
And the pines?
Yeah, those pines should have been trimmed.
I, I'll take a look next summer to buy it, no?
The day you struck was there. A few weeks back, so.
Especially arguing lines like that. We have trees or the lines going through the trees when you tell them arguing, uh. That's a, that's a real safety factor.
I had voted for them at the same day. There is, literally, there was literally a fire coming off the pine trees and they didn't care.
No.
I think, I went and picked you up.
That's why, yeah, that's where it happened with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got an update from the, uh, planning, uh, okay, so, uh, it, rather point out, we've got our next meeting, uh, on this further. Um, the agenda, we'll have two UUO change proposals, um. One that, uh, probably is second time is, uh, relative to guest quarter definition. Um, also, we'll be looking at, uh, LA lot garage dimensions. The way that UUO described today, really to be compliant. Well, I would say very few, maybe if any garages. Uh, that had been built in the recent past and as I drive around are compliant. So it makes Joe, Robert's job nearly impossible at the moment, and we're gonna try and get some definition that will prove that. Still make the garages, uh, architecturally, uh. Feeling, um, sort of promote the six plenty garage, but still make, uh, Robert's job. Uh, achievable, because right now it's not, so we'll work on that. Um, we've got two zoning requests that, that the public notices are out. And, uh, this will be our first time to use the electronic feedback form in addition to all the other methods, but we'll try that out. Um, Robert didn't mention, but you know, we sent that out to all the, um. Uh, all the board members, I think, have you got just six? I think it's picture star, so I encourage, if you're, if you're here tonight and you haven't done it, give it a try, please. Um, because your feedback is helpful and then Robert will be, uh, collating your results and try to identify any quirks that we didn't expect. Um, but we'll keep, uh, keep working that.
So you know, right now, it's all the council.
No, no, it, this, these two zoning approvals that are out there now, they're, we will use electronic format.
Okay.
But we're looking for the council to, um, be able to give direct feedback of issues that.
As well, so you can go on the webpage right now. Um, and click on it, it'll pop the form up right there for you and you start filling out and give the confirmation that I accepted. Uh, and then that should be it. So and if you have anything, feel free to email me, let me know.
So that's a good track. Um, an update on the, uh, comprehensive plan work that you've got going. Um, and it'll come down to some feedback that looks for the council here. Um, so we sent out, Robert created actually a scope of work or sort of a request for quote, uh, to a number of parties, four actually. Region three A, hometown initiatives, ground rules, and Robert, I don't recall the fourth one. Yeah, I thought you might struggle too. Anyway, we've sent it as purchase or something, that's the one we did. Yeah. Yeah, maybe, yes, so four firms have received our requests. Only two have replied, hometown initiatives and, uh, region three A. Um, we actually have hometown initiatives in, uh, yesterday for some open discussion. Uh, which is valuable and for both parties. There'll be more vetting of these two firms that we're gonna be going through. Yes, as a reference on, on cost, and we're gonna queue this up for the budget process. So the hometown initiative proposal, we've got two phases outlining our scope of work. Hometown, I was looking, their proposal was a fifteen thousand dollar cost for phase one and, um. To arrange between twenty and sixty for, for phase two. So all in, um, on a high end. Hometown issues fifty, seventy-five, and it could be as low as thirty-five. That's a sort of a function of. Of what we decide we want to take on. It could be a minor update. And it could be relatively simple administrative task on their part, and then obviously we'll have a lower cost. Region three A was dramatically different, and we don't know if they misinterpreted, we'll obviously want to have some discussion and, and try to understand that. But their costs were only twenty-five hundred for phase one, again, in comparison to fifteen thousand. For, uh, from hometown. And then on phase two, their total cost was just seventy-five hundred, again. Uh, hometown initiative at high of sixty thousand, so. World of difference. Um, we suspect the hometown initiative, um. It will probably dig a little deeper and, well, maybe more importantly, likely three A is using a template approach. So they've got some standard templates that they use on their communities and they would suggest we use that, and that might be the end of it. Um, there were real good comments from hometown initiative, and we think it was spot on. He said. Clear Lake in terms of communities is an anomaly, and that's a compliment. You know, we don't have open land that needs to be assessed. We, we know where our challenges are and, um. It doesn't necessarily fit, it's kind of less better out there. It doesn't necessarily fit, it's kind of less better out there. So what our proposal is, uh, from the PC executive committee at the moment. Is that we'd like to probably go through the effort of vetting these outfits, we can do that amongst, I'll say ourselves, but we can always invite. As many people as we want, have them in, you know, in off hours and we'll have a review with them, make sure they understand. Our proposal, we understand how they would respond. Um, and we would do that, likely I'd look for the September meeting, the town council meeting and bring in our. Um, proposed candidate, let's say it's hometown initiatives. They come in and give a presentation on themselves and their proposal and allow you all to have some spec and questions as well. And then, um. Keeping with the budget planning process, so the October budget, we would, uh, when it comes time to review that, we would have. A proposal in as what the cost would be, slightly gonna be over two-year period, so we have. You know, for example, again, we work with, uh, hometown initiative, might be a fifteen thousand dollar budget in two thousand twenty-four. And then the balance would be at twenty-five. So we got September to maybe make a decision, uh, at the town council that we would want to. Spend the effort and go forward, then we'll budget the process from there. And that's really where we're at as well, is we need to convince ourselves that this is something that we want to do, we want to put the money forward, we want to put the effort forward, we want to start with the, uh. Community feedback and that'd be the first step, which likely would kick off probably. January, February timeframe. And they, uh, we're, we're guessing about a six-month period of, of community feedback. And then we can start digesting the data and working it from there. Um, so some feedback from you that sound appropriate, that we would do the vetting and we could, we, we, when we have these, um, outfits coming in. We could extend the invitation beyond ourselves. Um, we would do that offline and if all goes well. One of the firms in September for a more formal presentation.
Yeah, same here, Bill, thank you to you and Robert and everybody that sent them off.
There is one more thing that came out of the special, such, whatever, the executive committee. Uh, is we are gonna try for a third vote as well. Try to reach out to those two companies one more time then. So that would be a better.
Yeah. I don't know about so much discrepancy, it'd just be nice to have a little bit wider. So I'd find it fifth or sixth maybe.
And is that budget timing okay with Dan and George? Perfect, thank you.
And, and last point, so again, we're trying to work convincing ourselves that this makes sense. One area that we would be looking at is, as a group. Can you study the comprehensive plan, what's missing? Are there deficiencies, are there issues that are there? And I would challenge you to take some time. A critical look at the comprehensive plan and think about what's missing, that's what we'll be pinging, um, these outfits and that's what we'll be pinging our. Our, uh, residents, but I think you all might be the primary source of information and then that will. Um, queue up the questions that we actually ask our residents, you know, are you satisfied with? You know, one of the objectives that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, so we'll try to pinpoint those. Just a few examples to prime your pump on some of his thoughts, so for example, today, there's not a lot of discussion on. Uh, the objectives of the road commission, the mission is new, that would be a perfect example of what should be incorporated in the. Refresh of the comprehensive plan. Um, I bring up, uh, public utilities and. Power lines are one, but what's, uh, really has changed in the last five years, for example, is, uh, communications, internet access. You know, the cable here is not the best, fiber is starting to show up around the, um. Surrounding communities and what should we be doing as a group who promote? That kind of technology here at the lake, whether it's fiber or cell phone improvements, these kind of things could be. Um, the objectives then from the conservancy are probably not fully incorporated in a comprehensive plan and that's it. We've, we've got a fantastic group of folks there doing some great things and should they be incorporated in a comprehensive plan? Uh, short-term rentals comes up. It's a hot button and how do we, uh, think about that in the future? Commercial development's not a big problem for us, but. There's certainly some sediment around the community that they'd like to see it or don't like to see it and it's, uh, it's addressed, but maybe not as. Well as we'd like. Those are just some of my early thoughts, but. If you spend some time with it, please, and you have some thoughts, bounce them to us and we'll get those.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else?
Do we want to schedule a special session while we're up here, so Todd knows who he's working with? I mean, next week's.
Thursday at seven is what I would, uh, propose.
Twenty-seven?
I can do six. If we want to do an hour earlier, uh. I think Todd's gonna need all the time we can give him. And since the applications do on the twenty-eighth. Todd, Todd, feel free to, uh, comment, that's my recommendation.
Can we have it a little bit, can you do earlier on Thursday?
The best I can get here is probably quarter pill. No, quarter pill's good.
Yeah, could we do a six?
Six. How does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fun.
I get the clock on the twenty-seventh.
Hey. Anything else?
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, it's Molly, I'd like to make a motion to close the regular scheduled council meeting on July eighteenth. Nine fifty, yeah.
George, my second, that.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same time, thank you.
Good night, everyone.